All right, no one has any objections. It's like the fourth block project.
The high school was going very well.
Yes, yes they are.
Well, I agree with what the child said. You've got to start at an early age to, you know, calculate what you can say you know about a lot of things.
Well, doing nothing doesn't work. That's for sure.
Okay, nothing more there. We'll look at the Dana Smith introduction to school thing.
Well, since, um, since you didn't get my email, I'm gonna first give you the email address where you can go log in. This will be what the page will look like when you actually, right before you sign on. The address I've been using, which has worked every time I've tried it.
He's got his cheat sheet.
Okay, right after your H T P P S, as you can see on the screen there, it says login dot school do dot com slash M login dot A S P. Just can't see it all on, on that. The base is the entire.
You won't want Dana to write down the word.
No, I want him emailed.
I watch out.
Log in or pay for it.
Okay, our, your login name will be your email address.
Okay.
M I S D J A Smith.
So the first one login. I mean, you're saying we can see this and I can kind of see it.
What's your email?
Why don't you turn off one of those lights?
Yeah, leave words, you can set them better. I forgot the login is your email address.
Is that password?
Yes, your house.
Login name. Your, your password, you'll set up your own password, but when you first sign on, it'll be new user. And then it'll prompt you to change your password to whatever you want there. But right now it's new user.
All one word?
All one word, no space. And then, don't do what I do and forget to go where it says go to, my school do. You want to click on that little.
You're not telling the whole county, are you?
I don't care who sees it. I don't.
Well, I mean, can anybody access and?
Anybody that I set up or they set themselves up.
Well, what I mean, can the average Joe out there?
But they don't know the password.
Well, but it's gonna be new.
It's only new user if you registered email.
If the principal gives their teachers the pamphlet that allows them to go and, and be a requester, they can do that.
But the average person, just from hearing this conversation, cannot do that.
By way of the written journal.
Why would they? The public would be setting up bogus jobs?
We hack everything today.
If you're site pretty savvy, you might be able to figure out a way.
Well, but what you're saying is, do you have any control over, like, you put in, what you put in?
I've put in all of it.
Then we choose our password, but I mean, would you know if somebody else did it other than us?
Yeah, I can look, in fact, I'm gonna look at the users right now to see why you guys didn't get the email. That's what I'm gonna do first. But see where it says maintenance direct? That is the program. Can you see that?
I see the blue line.
It says maintenance direct.
Yes.
And that's where we go.
That's where you go, and then you can sign in.
I'll write that down.
Don't forget that.
That's the front page. And then that's what it looks like. And we have a bunch of work orders, all ready and progress and complete and, uh, new requests. And it's real, it's real easy for the requester to use. Just see where it says new work order? You can click on it. Now, now you guys will see the exact same screens you're seeing from me, because I set you up as an administrator, just like myself. The principals I set up as a site administrator, so they're only gonna see things at their site. You'll be able to see everything just like I can. Uh, and then the principals can set up what's called requesters, which could be teachers, custodians, whoever they want to be able to use the system. Those requests will go to them, and they can send the request on. And, um, to send a work order, it's real simple. I like to use the short order work form. And it comes down and it asks, it prompts you the question. The date is already on there. You can select what priority you want, whether it's an emergency or whether it's a low priority. Then it asks for location information. Their schools are already on there. So they just select their school, describe what they want done, and it's safe. It's as simple as that.
Do, do principals still have to turn in written requests or you just use?
No, this is it. This is it. In fact, that's been our only problem thus far, thus far using it is, uh, some of them haven't gotten to where they're using it all the time. So, for example, with Duval, Mr. Bayston sends me in five or six requests. I put them in there thinking that they're not going to, and then Ken puts them in there and we've got a duplicate request. And once a request comes in, you can't take it out. We used a little imagination and, uh, just changed them to another work order at that location that came in later. Problem is, the date wasn't correct on it. So you can still figure out ways to change it, but when a request comes in, it's there forever.
Dana, show them where they can see the whole, the whole county, all of their requests and where, uh, whether it's complete and also the part where you have to put the materials.
Okay. See where it says advanced search right there? We learned that, uh, yesterday. See, we've only had about an hour training on this, so we're still learning too. But where it says advanced search is a real good place to go to look and see what's going on. So you can look at each location right there. You can scroll down. You can look at all new requests. You can look at work in progress. You just click on that. Click on what you want to specifically look at. And let's say I want to look at range here. I can look at everything that's been done or requested at that location. There where it says install lockers, that's something that they've asked for for quite some time. We just got, of course, in the work order system, but they, they started that project today. And we don't have it on there that it's in process yet. Debbie's been gone, and she's my right hand maiden. But, uh, you'll see there where room 108, uh, needs heat. That's been done. It was completed on the same date, was requested. And it tells who did it, which was Paul Smith, and it was in a classroom. When I look up there, I have to take my glasses off. When I look down here, I don't put my glasses on. I'm a little smart. But there's some other work orders. But you can specifically look at just work that's been done. You can look at all work that's been requested. There's different, there's different ways you can do that. Uh, I can go here and let's say I want to pull up this new request. That's a heating and cooling request for classroom, band room, just got that today.
Could you get a log to H V A C today?
Now, if I want to.
You don't go to the shortcut form? It's the one that has whether you put them in all the materials. It's, it's under action, something we go.
Action, oop, I missed it somewhere.
It is on the long form. It's not on the short form.
Did that go to the short form?
Yes, you did.
I didn't.
I'm pretty sure you did. Yes, see where it says work order shortcuts? How's that work order? If you want me?
Can I do that again? What did I do wrong? No, I was looking to show where the action, where we're gonna put it.
Short or long format?
See where it says work order?
Yeah, I see the work order.
It says shortcuts.
Oh, okay. Let me go where, back to where it says unassigned. Now, I know I know how to do it there. On a new request, I don't. Unassigned.
Well, I see.
And should be action taken. There it is.
The action taken.
Where the word says action taken, you can only assign one worker to a, a request or to an assigned work order. So what we're gonna do, we're gonna come down where it says action taken, and we're gonna put, if there's somebody working with that worker, we're gonna put that there. And we're gonna put, put like if there's materials or how much we had to spend on materials for that. And then it'll show up when you, when we pull up the work completed, it'll show up that, uh, if somebody helped Paul Smith or what materials was used, and that's where it will show up. And it'll look like. It'll look something like that. It'll say, uh, if there's something ordered forward or, or, then it'll say somewhere in there. Those are all requests. Which by the way, you've asked about that request, about the steps. You got steps done, railings will be done probably tomorrow, and we'll fuel that.
And in that work order though, for that particular, um, project, you should have, in the action steps, I think that's where you told me, uh, initially, it would say if the materials that had to be used to, um, complete that project or to make that project occur.
Yes, that's where it'll be.
The railing, um.
Yes, eventually we'll have that information in there. How much we spend and.
Where did they get that? Precious saving actual list.
They probably just, they, no more than they got, they probably got it all.
Actual list, yeah.
That's what we need.
Yeah, and the action taken is, they're supposed to list the materials used for that project.
Yeah, we'll put like treated lumber total of $560 or something like that.
And if they went to one of the local hardware stores to purchase something, I know Debbie, we've talked about that, that it will, they'll put, um, the work order that that purchase was connected to and where it was going.
Itemized list.
Itemized list.
Itemizes in four, two before's and?
Well, I don't think that would be necessary.
No, well, probably what it'll say is treated lumber total of $560. It'll be a sum. Now, if, you know, for big items, we could list them. If it's two or three big items, we'll list them.
But you would be able to track that work order back to the, um, purchase.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
There was one I was playing with the other day, and if there's a place I know that asks for, asks for a P O number if you're going to a specific place, click on that one that's parts on order, or number 112 there, installed vambers. I went and got some vents today that go in there, and I have an actual P O that those go with. And it will have the amount on there, if we get the right ones in there.
And it, it will track it back to that purchase order.
Yeah, so it's the M G O I D and your work order I D number. Yep, we'll do that.
Well, we're trying, I, I think all the schools now understand that we're not gonna take anything other than work orders on this. That's the only way.
Yeah, the duplicates are a real problem. If we try to enter them for them, then they enter them again. It's just a real mess.
And we're gonna say to them again, we're gonna, you're gonna show them on the next principal's meeting and again say, we are not accepting any emails, instant chats, post-it notes, nothing. If you want a work order, something, none of it has to be here, because that's the only way that we can keep track. And you guys can look at easily, okay, if that work order has been submitted by the school, how much time that it is taking to get it completed. It should go back to the materials, uh, who worked on that project, um, want, want, I think, once all of the, uh, everybody's comfortable with it, it will be easily, um, tracked. You know, Dana has, uh, you know, Brenda can pull it up, uh, she can check, you know.
I don't know, you may want to consider just the principals to put in the work order.
Well, and that will leave, be able to, that's gonna be the principal's call, I guess, uh, saying to them, if we do, we better make sure they don't do it again, because.
See, we're supposed to.
Probably would tell them if there was one that was already in there. They really do.
They did pay six.
Well, unless you had exactly the same language.
That wasn't on the program.
No, I don't think it would tell you.
You don't think it'd tell you?
Now, you'd figure it out though, when you went to the school and looked at them all, you'd, you'd see it twice, but it wouldn't tell you as you put it in.
That may create a huge headache for you in the making.
Yeah, it would.
If you made one designated person.
And with that, he trained to assign them.
I have some hands that, I had just printed all four, hand over the one that Ken had sent in about the heat in the band room. That, yesterday morning, Mary Bell called me, so I sent Smitty up there yesterday, so I don't, and I told Mary, I said, you make sure Ken puts that in the computer in school do. Well, she might not put it into today, so I think that one might be.
Probably already been fit.
Dana, is, is there a way, uh, well, let's put it this way. Do you expect a, a principal to use this on an immediate emergency request?
It'd be better if they were, because it'll come on our screen and it'll flash that they've got an emergency.
Okay, that's, that was my second question.
I think that's as fast a way to get a hold of us as, as getting on the phone and witnessing this. So I'm gonna encourage that.
Well, I had the same question that Larry had. How did, you say it comes on our flashes? I mean, do they somehow denote that it's emergency or it's just, oh, it is?
There's an emergency section there that they can put emergency. It'll, it'll flash on the screen. So, uh, and, and there's Mr. Curry's where I tried to set him up. Uh, I've got you at F L Curry at zoominternet.net.
That's right.
Well, I don't know why it says right there, it's checked emailing you login information, and why it didn't do it. I, I don't know why it did Mr. Wilpersen and didn't do the others. While I'm, while I've got you here, I'll look and make sure I didn't misspell an email address or something.
Dana, when I first saw it, it come on the screen and said school do, I thought it was some kind of a spam. I, I, I started to delete it and I thought, well, I'll take a look at it.
Yeah, here's Mr. McAllister, G G M A C A, one C A L.
Two Cs.
Two Cs. Well, that explains yours.
But it's not G G M A C, it's just M C C.
Yeah.
G G M C C A.
Not me. And I just got new glasses.
I know, I have one, but I don't know why the other one.
Well, I can, I can see a lot of it, but why don't I can't?
Two Cs, right there?
There's two Cs. There's now a C. Did you say rounder?
Yes.
He got his attention.
Yeah.
We need to have wireless in that room for the board members.
And the, and the media.
Who can take care of that anyway?
And there's Carol Smith.
Mine, I got mine.
Oh, you got yours?
Okay, well, I'm, I'm two for five. It's bad for me.
You're going good.
Name's Elizabeth Steve. And there's Larry, Wilktree Farm at AOL dot com. Oh, that's right, you got yours.
Oh, here.
I saw it, I heard about that.
Thank you.
S B P Yard.
What does it say?
He said S B.
Okay, I need a P.
P for priestly.
I can't see how you spell my name, is it spelled correctly?
S B.
I'm talking about my real, my last name.
Your real name?
Priestly.
I can read the letters, but don't know how to spell.
L E Y.
Yes.
He doesn't have L E Y.
I get it.
Yeah, and, and his real name is Priestley, but it's L E Y. You don't have.
You won't see L E Y?
But he'll know that it's not right.
I wanna change it to B.
I wanna change that.
And Sean knows it's not right.
Not, not that I tell you or anything.
You'd rather than call.
It's welcome.
Okay.
Bet you take care of it.
God, everybody. Now, did, Fred, did you get kiss corrected?
Well, there wasn't nothing wrong. That's very possible. Like Larry said, I may have thrown trash and then he greeted me.
Yeah, you got school do.
I'm lost if I don't look like a trash.
I might, I might have been three for five.
Yeah, you have been, I'll, I'll give you that.
That's a C.
Now, sometimes things that come emails from, and I don't know why, goes into my junk email.
Yeah, mine does too.
And, and I do not go back every so often and check my junk email.
You don't like to jump, yep. Dana, I got a question. I saw there on the right of the screen, you could get the weather report.
Yeah.
That isn't from Tony, is it?
I hope not.
Does he have a liar?
There's a paragraph there.
Does he have a liar?
Huh?
I said, does he have a liar?
Is there any questions that you might have or?
No, if I get on, I might have some.
Yeah. I've still got some.
When you start, and, and you all had a, a training, remember?
Yesterday.
Another training, um.
We had an hour of training. It's the first training we've had, other than just calling them and asking a question and set up and some things where we just run in and we can do. There's a line that we can call and they'll answer whatever questions we've got about a formal training session. So, but he, he was pretty impressed how we had everything moving and. For no more training than we've had, he was, he probably was doing really good.
Well, I think that this will, uh, track everything that, um, you know, questions, any questions that we have. Once everybody is, is making sure that they're putting everything in there and, um, just like, uh, the other day we talked, Dana, there's a place, if, if your, um, people are in a training session during a day, there is somewhere that you could put that. So we know that day they are in, uh, receiving professional development.
We can put it in just like a work order.
Yes, but we, we talked about making sure that that, uh, anytime that I may say, where were they? You know, you can say on this day they were.
Well, when you get the old vander, it should total the same as the work orders too.
Absolutely, because as, uh, it, it's supposed to go back, as Debbie said, to the purchase order, right?
And, and we'll eventually get sophisticated enough to, to even, like, we sign a job to a contractor. We could put that information that, uh, we had a contractor fix heat in 108 and what it costs us to, to do that.
Was, was there a cost for the software or?
Yes, uh, and what brought this all about, to make a, to make it a long story. Uh, back in the, uh, summer, the School Building Authority bought us the preventive maintenance version of school do. And, uh, they paid for it. Uh, and we're trying to enter in, uh, information, and we've got a training set up next month on it. Uh, but it's strictly for preventive maintenance. This is for work orders and daily type stuff, and they wouldn't allow us to do daily type stuff on the preventive maintenance program. So we had to, to, to buy this, uh, separate, uh, separate piece of school do. And it was, uh, it was right at $2,500 for the year, and then the renewal fee is $1,900 a year. And it's about the same cost as what the school building paid for our preventive maintenance. Now, there are two, uh, separate programs other than this that I think would be beneficial for the board to buy, which is the inventory program, which would allow us to track, uh, custodial orders, destruction orders, paper, uh, things of that nature, food service, commodities, those kind of things that come in and go out. And it's called an inventory program, which is right along the same line as far as cost. And there's one that will, uh, that's called trips, that will track bus trips. Schools could enter their, uh, bus requests through this same company through, uh, the transportation department. And Rodney, I think, is gonna look at it. I've already got the cost on these other two, uh, pieces of program that, that can work with this, so. I think probably this is just gonna be a beginning. See, where it says inventory direct, and then there's one that says near, uh, next to the bottom where it says trip direct. I think that both of those programs would be beneficial.
Dana, could you get this, all of these as a package deal and save money?
Well, we did, we can save some money on, on, on this, because they participate in that national, um, association. It's N J I P or something like that. Anyway, Mrs. Lucas is coming in with it. And we got an additional discount for that, so we're probably getting all the discounts that's available through that program.
And one thing, Dana tried earlier to develop, he and Dana worked together, tried to develop one.
Yes.
But there were just so many barriers there that they couldn't make it, couldn't make it work. You know, I, I think I talked to you all about it earlier, thinking that it was gonna be up and running, but, um.
I tried to avoid the $2,500. The, the problem we, we, we had when, when we, me and Debbie couldn't use it at the same time. It just balled down, and if the schools had been using it to, well, you type and then maybe a minute later it'd show up. It, it would have worked fine if we could put it on some kind of web-based program to make it work. But I, you know, I went on something free on the internet and tried to set it up, and it, it just. It, it would've worked fine if we could put it on some kind of web-based program to make it work, but I, you know, I went on something free on the internet and tried to set it up, and it, it just wouldn't, just wouldn't work.
And we knew, we knew this one, it was in existence in other counties, we're using it and having much success, so, um...
But the county's used this for years.
Yes, you said pie right there, now, does that tell us an overview of what's been submitted, what's finished? Is that what all that does?
Working class, work in progress, completed, closed.
There's a colored chart underneath that tells you about all those.
So, the people are all what, what do you want?
Gala.
What color do you want?
It's cloudy.
The bigger one is the closed work order, I think that's the orange.
So by looking at you, you can get an overview, I guess.
That would be an efficiency chart.
You get it all figured out, and you give us a class.
He's school do too.
Work session.
Their university sent, uh, Merrell Bates, I think we should all just get one. Uh, actually, I think there's one in April.
That's what happened to us.
That's what you said.
Sounds like request denied.
Okay, thank you, Dana, anything else about school do for Dana, we'll all try to log on, and if so, we'll, if not, we'll...